Does he want to play?
Yeah, like he doesn't. He talks about football.
Who I don't.
He's not.
What, you're a student?
No. So he's down in gymnasium. He's in fifth. And I was just like.
Oh, in fifth grade?
Yeah. Eventually he told me to. You go play.
Yeah.
He's at.
I go to the ball.
I'll have the same reminds on the separate. I have the same sort of thing is I know he's going to have football.
So is mine also.
I try to get him so into something else as soon as I possibly can.
Well, and my husband is like a football fanatic. And you know, so like he goes to dad's and it's like football. And I'm like, what's funny about baseball? And you know, his, his big cousins were into baseball. And I'm like, baseball, baseball. It's just like baseball.
All right, so mine has been competitive from that. Let's get into it.
The board has returned from closed session. We will start tonight's agenda with the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the August 24th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the August 24th, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna go a little bit out of order here and start with student recognition. Mr. Carey, I believe you have some recognition to do.
Yes. This evening, we wanted to recognize two of our high school students. The board remembers last spring, we went through a process of defining what a 201 graduate should look like. And we got input from all of our stakeholders. And we took a look at that information and then we kind of boiled it down into some key components. And what it kind of boils down to is we want our graduates to be ready for the future, to be inspired, to have a sense of purpose, compassion for not only their fellow students, but within their community, and then a lifelong level of learning. And so those were the key phrases. And we decided that we'd like to refresh our district logo. And Megan Burbink, our assistant principal at the high school, she said there was a young man at the high school, Shawn Lehman, who she thought could do a great job taking our thoughts and shaping a new logo for us. And then my understanding is Shawn enlisted the help of his sister Amanda. And the two of them worked on a logo and shared it with the district. And we loved it so much, we decided that we were going to put it on a polo shirt for the entire staff. And so all of our staff on the first day of the school year this year, custodians, administrative assistants, teaching assistants, teachers and administrators, everybody got a polo. And then everybody wore those on the first day of student attendance. And so it was really awesome to see. And so this evening, we would like to recommend, recognize Amanda and Shawn, and present them with one of the 201 shirts so that they have a memory of their contribution to our district. And then the board members, if you can give Shannon your shirt sizes at our special board meeting Thursday, we'll have shirts for the board as well. But at this time, if Shawn and Amanda, if you could come forward, and our board president Laura Coyle will present you with your shirts.
And I feel like we should show the logo to everybody. I don't know if we can get this on cameras and giving, giving them the shirts, but sort of unfold it so everybody can see here. It's a great job. Thank you so much. So this one is yours, Amanda.
Can we ask them a couple of questions?
Yes, you can.
So I have, the first question, I'll let them sit down, is can you come to my house and teach my kids how to cooperate? Because I'm amazed that a brother and sister did this. And the second question is, what was the thing that was in your head when you were, when you guys were designing? What was the thing you kept on going back to when you got stuck on, on designing this thing?
So, so I think when I was designing it, I tried like, I looked up like Westmont history and how we used to make bricks. And I thought I would incorporate bricks into my.
Uh oh. He's coming with a microphone for you.
There you go.
So I learned that Westmont, like way back then, we used to make bricks for buildings. And we were like one of the main suppliers for bricks in Illinois. And I thought I would incorporate that in the logo.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
Well, he needed help doing the online design since he made it on paper. So I decided to help them with that using an app called Flip a Clip. That was really easy to do and it was fun also, so.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, so much for giving them the opportunity. I just have a really short speech. This is a prepared speech. Thank you from the Lehmonds. Can you tell who's the salesperson in the family? You guys so much, this is so cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's great to see the talent. It's awesome. Thank you so much.
No, you don't have to leave.
You can stay if you want, you can stay or?
Well, let it, can you bring cookies?
Wait, let me look.
Thank you so much. That's wonderful. Congratulations, Shawn and Amanda. Okay, so we're going to actually save public comment until closer to seven. The board has been changing our structure a little bit so that after closed session, we come in to open and start the agenda right away. But we do want to make sure that the community has an opportunity to comment publicly. So tonight, we're gonna go to our consent agenda and then come back for public comments. And then after tonight, what we'd like to communicate to the public is that we will start open session between 6:30 and seven, not before 6:30, but between 6:30 and seven, whenever our closed session is complete, so that the public knows when they need to show up in order to do the first public comment. There is always a second public comment on the agenda as well. So for now, we're going to move to the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Rebecca Burbaum, Westmont Junior High School, long-term sub, science. Eva Rosel, Westmont High School, long-term sub, math. Liz Meneses, Westmont Junior High, seventh grade JV cheerleading coach. Sam Meneses, Westmont Junior High, eighth grade cheerleading coach. Mike Hackel, Westmont Junior High, volunteer wrestling coach. And then we do have some resignations. Number two, appointment of hearing officer. Number three, appointment of non-discrimination coordinators, complaint managers. Number four, approval of student tours.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Donio?
Yes.
Ms. Stuckity?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Motion carries. With the approval of my fellow board members, since that didn't take very long, if someone shows up for public comment in the middle of information and discussion, are you guys okay with us allowing that to proceed tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Is that okay? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to information and discussion. Number one is the crisis plan.
And the crisis plan, school districts are required to have certain meetings throughout the year and then certain drills throughout the year. And that information is shared with the Board of Education. It's not something that we share publicly for security reasons. But I do have to compliment the Westmont Fire Department and Police Department. We have an excellent working relationship. And every summer, the representatives from the police and fire department meet with our administrators and review all of our drills from the prior year. We discuss what went well, what we could do better, what we need to change. And then that planning goes into our drills for the upcoming year. And then we work on our schedule. There are certain drills, the fire department has to participate. Some drills, the police department needs to participate. And so we schedule those events. And so you can take a look at and see when our drills will be taking place and again, the evidence of those meetings.
Any questions for Kevin? All right. Second item is the presentation of monthly financial statements.
Good evening, we have the June financial statements for you. During the month of June, we received $180,000 from the state. There are $215,000 of fiscal year 21 payments voucher, but not released at that time. We received one installment of the 2020 property tax levy in the amount of $10.5 million. Total property taxes collected as of June 30th were 12 million, a little over $12 million, which is a 48.83% collection rate. And this is slightly below what has been typical over the last couple of years. Revenues are slightly below average. And that is in part because of the property tax revenue being lower than we've received in the past. Revenues in the O and M fund, the same thing because of property taxes, they're a little bit lower. And the same thing is true for the transportation fund. And there are $161,000 of transportation payments that were vouchered, but not received by June 30th. As far as expenditures go, in the add and tort funds, they were slightly below the prior year averages. And this is a result of several factors. One, the district had unsettled contracts for both the WTA and Wespa. And as a result, salary increases attributable to FY '21 for WTA, Wespa administrators and non-union employees are not reflected in the FY '21 expenditure balance. So in addition, spending was lower overall as a result of COVID. So that's why if you look at the fund balance report, we have positive, you know, our fund balance actually increased. And so when we will do the audit, you'll see that it will likely decrease because the audit, depending upon the timing, because we're going to be paying these retro things at the end of September, beginning of October, the auditors may not include them. So otherwise, next year, your fund balances will decrease as a result of those payments being made in this fiscal year. And then in the O and M fund, again, spending was lower than anticipated. Some of this was because a couple of projects we couldn't get done because of material shortages, like the roofing and things like that. So, but again, and we are saving money in that fund for our HVAC system at the junior high. And then in the transportation fund, our expenditures were well below what we anticipated. And that is because we were not in person, you know, for the, you know, we're not in person for a majority of the year. So our transportation needs were significantly lower. And so you'll see that, you know, changing next year when we're, because we're back in school now. And so that cushion will help us through because our revenues for next year, transportation revenues may not be as great as they were this year because they're always a year in arrears. And so we didn't have as many expenses there based on how much you spent. Unless, of course, everyone else spent less and somehow the just, the state allocates more. So that has happened, that happened the year before. So, so the good news is we have a better balance than anticipated, which will help carry us through future years. And then we had, at that point in time, we had $18.9 million of investments. Unfortunately, interest rates are relatively low. So our earnings are significantly less this year than they were last year. And then in terms of food service, we actually, because of the way that we were reimbursed for food expenses, we actually had a less negative balance than we have in prior years as well. Does anybody have any other questions on that?
I have, I have just one question. You said for the transportation budget, unless everyone else spent less and then the state could or might make an adjustment upwards for everybody. I know this is just asking you for an opinion and you can't, you don't have a crystal ball, but wouldn't it stand to reason that everyone would have spent less in the same period?
Right, and then other people, everyone will get more, they may get more than anticipated. It, I mean, it depends, like last year, they, because they had extra money, they, the allocation was greater.
Was higher.
Yeah.
So there's also that factor.
Right. Yeah, and we never know quite what the allocation is going to be. It's, it's dependent upon the dollar amount of claims that come in. So there's no set guaranteed amount that you'll be reimbursed.
I get it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Kim? Okay. The next item for information and discussion is the substitute pay rate.
As with every other segment of the economy, we are experiencing shortages of substitutes. And so the DuPage County ROE did a survey of surrounding districts. And as we reviewed that, we noticed that our rates were substantially lower than our neighbors. And so as a result, we currently pay $97 a day and that's for any sub, whether it's a teacher, a TA, it's a daily rate or a long-term to cover like maternity leave or some other leave of absence. And so we're recommending the daily rate be increased from $97 to 110. And that when we have these long-term sub positions, that we increase that to $200 a day to try and attract talent to our district to help out. And then these rates would become effective on September 16th.
I noticed some of the other districts had like after X number of days increases to this, did we explore that?
We had that in the past. And when we bumped our rate up to $97 in 2017, we got rid of that because it's, it's a record-keeping like nightmare.
Challenge.
Yep. And so it's just easier to have a certain rate and everybody's paid that for the same amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the timing for long-term? You say long-term substitute, but it's, what is the stipulation for the amount of days?
We didn't have a stipulation on the amount of days, but usually it would be somebody who is on, gonna, they're covering a leave of absence. So that could be a few weeks, it could be six weeks, it could be 12 weeks.
Is there a minimum?
I would say, I mean, that's a good question. We didn't really.
Yeah, I mean, typically, it's an FMLA leave or a, or a paternity leave, something along those lines. And so I, I would say two or more weeks typically would be a leave request.
I'm just asking as you hire and you're hiring someone.
Well, and we would tell people when, that they're, that they are being hired at the long-term rate. When we, because it's, again, it's a known leave that's going to happen.
Right. So on our end, you know, we have, you know, teachers who child's ill, they're ill, so they'll call off, they'll need a sub. That would be the daily rate. If it's a planned absence for an extended period of time, that typically is something that they'll submit in writing to the district office. And then we do a posting for a long-term sub. And then that would be at the long-term rate.
And then Kevin, is another difference, just for the sake of clarification, is that daily sub comes into sub plans that the teacher has created. But long-term subs, they're actually creating the lesson plans and doing the assessments and all of those things, right?
Yes. And just so that the board knows, we do have right now a long-term sub for our BAN program. And our intent is to increase the sub rate to the new, new long-term rate.
Starting on the six, starting on the 16th, he'll get that.
Makes sense. Any other questions on the board? Okay. Item four, the update on the 2021-22 school year.
Looking forward to it. We're not doing updates on. All right. And so as we've been doing with all of our board meetings, just giving the board an update on how the school year is going so far. And because we've been in for a number of days now, we do have information on COVID cases and students who maybe had to be sent home for symptoms. But again, I always like to reiterate in case this is the first time, we have community members who are watching our board meetings, that there are some key guiding principles that we, we focus on. And this year primarily, obviously, it's always the health and safety, but this year, we're also committed to being in person full days. And so everything that we put in place is to meet that goal, is to make sure that we can maintain that in-person environment. Currently, DuPage County is at a high level of transmission with the new cases at about 158 per 100,000. Positivity rate is 4.36%. That is starting to plateau, the DuPage County Health Department was telling us. So we are starting to see a little bit of a plateau. So hopefully, we keep trending in that direction. Locally, you can see what our seven-day rate is, and this is as of the 10th. And you can see where we're at, we're still trending below 5%, which is good to see. And, but again, the number of new cases per 100,000, that's what keeps pushing us into the more substantial level. In terms of our COVID data, we've only had one staff member test positive. That was a fully vaccinated staff member and they did have symptoms, minor symptoms. So that individual is quarantining. But that's been our only positive case that we've, we've had to date. I can also share with you that starting the 19th of September, so the 20th and that Monday, all school employees must be vaccinated or produce a negative test result. And we're sitting at about 40 employees district-wide that have not produced a vaccination card. So Shannon's doing a great job, she's working with those individuals. And if they are vaccinated, helping them to produce that card. Otherwise, we'll be collecting those tests. And the only way that they'll be able to be in our schools is if they have the negative test. And that'll start next Monday, the 20th. In terms of our student attendance, you can see we've had a couple of positive cases among our students. So seven in all, four of those cases were, are two sets of siblings. So we had one family, two children in the family tested positive, another family, two families, two students tested positive. So we've had seven test positive. Again, the students going home with COVID symptoms, you know, we're still following that practice that if they have symptoms, they go home until they have a negative test or something from a doctor saying that it's seasonal allergies. And we're even telling families, in the case of things like allergies, if they get a note from the doctor just saying this child suffers from seasonal allergies, we keep that on file so that those types of symptoms, we don't need to send the child home again. You know, so we're trying to work with our families because we know how important it is for the children to be, to be in school. And again, just the transmission level, we're at a high level of transmission. And again, that's the new cases, over 100,000 positivity rate would put us in the moderate. So if we can get those new cases down, we'd be in really good shape. And again, we're following the guidance of the CDC, the IDPH, ISBE, the governor's mandate. So we are requiring masks of all students and employees. Physical distancing, when students are masked, is three feet. And then on buses, it's required. And our contact tracing is based upon that, at three feet. And just a reminder, we know that some of our families aren't necessarily thrilled with the mask mandate. But again, school districts who do not follow mask mandate, they can lose their accreditation. Therefore, the high school diplomas are meaningless. You can't participate in the IESA State Series or IESA State Series. And you could lose funding, so. Thus far, any court challenges have not been supported by the court. Just, you know, kind of that test to stay, we've been talking about the S.H.I.E.L.D. testing. And so a little additional information for the test to stay program. Again, if a student has close contact and if we wanted to do a test to stay program, that student would have to test negative 1, 3, 5, and 7 those days after the exposure. S.H.I.E.L.D., they're, they limit you to one test. A child can be tested once a week. So multiple tests on the same child, they're, they're not, then it's no longer a free service. The students, when they leave your school, and this is the challenging part, because obviously, we can control our environment. But if you're doing a test to stay program, when the child's at home, they have to quarantine at home. They cannot leave the home. They can't play on their travel team, they can't go out with the family, they have to quarantine at home in order to meet the protocols. Again, the CDC and DuPage County Health Department do not support test to stay. And it does expose the district to additional liability. Because CDC is saying one thing and as a district, we're doing something else. The only county health department that currently is supporting test to stay is Lake County. But I believe they've put in a lot of different protocols in place in order to make, make that happen, so.
I'm sorry, can I ask one question while we're on this slide? And I think we talked a little bit about this last time, but to clarify, this would be if a student is unvaccinated.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
And Kevin, if I could, what is the recommendation for a test to stay? Because I'm not seeing that a lot as a recommendation of these day, number of days you have to test. Like what, the test to stay kind of program or recommendations, is that coming from, it's not coming from the CDC, correct?
It's coming from, the ISBE is kind of floating that out there, a test to stay program. And then obviously, S.H.I.E.L.D. is, but it's not being supported by the Health Department. So there's a little bit of a conflict, conflict there.
And so are there other testing, I guess, companies that have other, I guess, they have other means of testing that's outside of this, this test to stay?
I can look into that. I, the one, the reason why school districts are attracted to S.H.I.E.L.D. is because the ISBE is picking up the cost. So that's why they're, they're pushing it. Any other testing program a district would want to partner with, there would be a cost involved with that.
So ISBE is, although they're picking up the cost, they're not picking up the cost for all these days?
Uh, no, no. Because again, S.H.I.E.L.D., basically the package is one child per, that, a child gets one test per week. So we have close to 1,400 students. We could administer 14 individual tests per week, but we could not repeat any of our students with the same, with S.H.I.E.L.D.
I'll just make other comments later.
So, but just for clarity, I just want to make sure I'm really clear on this slide. We're not doing test to stay? We're not yet doing S.H.I.E.L.D. testing?
No, not right now, we're not.
Okay. All right, I'm just making sure.
S.H.I.E.L.D., there's a delay on, on boarding with S.H.I.E.L.D., they're pretty inundated right now.
Okay. So this is just information on what's?
This is additional information that we found out, this was actually yesterday with the meeting with the Health Department.
Okay.
And then just some reminders for our families that we are asking that if a child has COVID-like symptoms, that they stay home. And again, return with a negative test or a doctor's note. Close contact is defined as when students are masked three feet for 15 minutes in a 24-hour. a 24-hour period, and if they're not masked, then it goes back to the six feet. So without the mask mandate, it'd be difficult for us to have all of our students in our classrooms. The quarantine, an unvaccinated person who tests positive quarantines for 14 days. An unvaccinated person who is a close contact, working with the Health Department, it can be a 10- or 14-day quarantine. In order for a 10-day quarantine, they can no longer have contact with a positive case for the duration of the 10 days. And so that becomes a challenge with families, you know, that means removing those children who are not positive out of the household for the duration of 10 days. And then the Health Department will, there's also some other things that families have to do, they have to on a daily basis report to the Health Department if they're having symptoms, again, the negative test, and then the Health Department will release them after the 10 days. For a vaccinated person, if they test positive, oh, what happened to my formula? If they test positive for COVID-19, they would quarantine for 10 days from the symptoms or the positive test. And then if a vaccinated person has no contact, they still need to have a negative test three to five days after exposure. Originally, it was if you were asymptomatic and vaccinated, you didn't have to worry about anything. The CDC has updated that guidance now, and so you need to get a negative test from that person after three days.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more quick question? Just the difference between close con, exposure is just like your, that's different than close contact, right?
I'm using them interchangeably.
Okay.
So if you're exposed, that means that you've been in close contact for at least 15 minutes.
Got it, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. And then just briefly, I asked Kim to kind of update the board a little bit on, we know crossing guards, transportation, and we know our community is concerned about those things. So Kim, you want to?
Well, first, I would just like to reiterate that there is a labor shortage in all segments of the economy, and school districts are not immune to this. I realize that people are, you know, losing patience, but we still need to find patience as we work through this year. It's been a challenging year, and I think it's going to continue to be challenging. So, and a couple of things, one, the district has many openings. We have lots of opportunities to employ people. We need teaching assistants, we need custodians, we need people for our grounds crew, we need food service staff, we need subs, both daily and long-term substitutes. We also need crossing guards for the corner at CAS and Chicago, and CAS and Trobe. Communications went home to parents, letting them know that we can no longer staff them. We have been working with the Village of Westmont, we have a contract with them for a few of our locations, but, and then we asked them to add some locations for us, they contracted that out with Andy Frame Services. Andy Frame Services probably has 20 openings on their websites for a myriad of school districts and other places that are looking to hire crossing guards. So my staff and I are manning the crossing guard locations for the first several weeks. We just stopped last Friday, we did get a couple of community volunteers, thank you, Carlos. We were able to get a few people from EMS. Occasionally, a couple of times, the community service officer was able to help, we reached out to the fire department, just about no stone has been unturned to try and find people to man that, but there are not any people there. And so we did take counts of, you know, kids crossing and stuff, and very low numbers there, and so that's why we had the communication to parents, so that they know that there's not going to routinely be a crossing guard there. There may be someone there on occasion, but we cannot guarantee crossing guards at those locations at this point in time. And then the other thing with transportation, and I will say, Westway has been doing a very good job considering the circumstances. So they do not have any substitute drivers. So on a day we experienced, I think it was yesterday, they had six drivers call off and not show up for work. And so when that happens, it impacts our routes, and we have to, so for a couple of ours, they ran the route, dropped some kids off, and then went to do another route with that same bus driver. So some of our students were 15, maybe 20 minutes late to school. That is going to be the practice when those situations occur. And they, just like our school district, where you have administrators, you have office staff, you know, taking on some of these jobs, they have, their managers are going out and running routes and doing things as well when they're short-staffed. Again, not a sustainable model for them as well. And so if we continue to see that there's going to be, you know, if this is becoming a frequent event, then we can look at some things, we've already had some discussions about maybe having some extra supervision in the morning or at the end of the day at our schools, and we'd have to kind of change route times and run, you know, the bus goes, okay, this group of kids, you're going to come in and you're going to be at school 15 minutes earlier than you normally do, et cetera. If we start to see that this is kind of the trend, and then they don't have it. So again, patience, everyone is doing the best they can, it's not an ideal situation, but we are trying to come up with other alternatives, and we feel that the kids getting there late is better than them not getting there at all. And again, not ideal. And so parents just, they just need to understand that. The other thing that we're, that the impact has is on field trips. So we've let all our administrators know that the field trips have to be completed, they have to be back at school 30 minutes before the end of the school day, so they don't interfere with routes being run. It also impacts our co-curriculars, and so they cannot run co-curricular routes, so for athletes and things like that, until the last, it's until the buses are finished at the end of the day. So our, all our schools have been notified of that, our athletic directors, and they should be working with their conferences to arrange games, so that there aren't conflicts with that as well. Because if we had to take, use those bus drivers to do co-curriculars, then you don't have drivers to run the routes home. So again, a lot, I mean, this is just highly unusual. And then the other thing, some of the schools are sending out like blackboard notices, letting parents know that buses are going to be late. We're working with Westway on getting a system so that parents can get those directly from Westway, and so we hope to, in the next week or so, have information on that. And then we can work with the schools that aren't sending those out, to get them to at least send the blackboard notice if buses are late. Anybody have questions?
So with the busing, I understand that we're in a particularly unusual situation. However, there is no end to this situation in sight. The labor market has been shrinking, the available labor has been shrinking for a number of years, and it's been harder and harder and harder to staff people for a number of years. COVID jumped us ahead about three to five years in that. And so this current staffing situation that we're in right now, realistically, is our staffing situation for the foreseeable future, not just this year, not just this month, but really, potentially, the next five years or more. So what can we do, what is it within our power to, to work on this? And I'm, and I'm talking specifically about the busing. I understand that the crossing guard situation is not ideal, and it's not great. I don't know what else we could do there also, but as it pertains to the busing, what can we do to think through what the next five years are going to look like for our students? Is it decreasing the routes, adjusting our start times, you mentioned, tweaking supervision at the beginning or the end of the day, so that, you know, we can kind of double up those routes? Because, because, I mean, it's been every single day. I know, I know at least I have gotten a notification every single day for the last two weeks, which, which I have a ton of, I've been in restaurant management for 20 years, I get it, this is not easy, and I have a ton of patience for it. But at some point, we have to stop being victims of the circumstances, and we have to jump ahead. So what are we doing to stop being victims of the circumstance, so that we can, you know, start to take control of what is realistically just going to be our situation? Can we partner with Marker? Can, can we, can we pay two different, can we pay them for some, I mean, and I'm spitballing here, but I know they run their, like, can we tweak our start times so that Marker can help us out, or other, what are other districts, can we, can we help our neighboring districts out and do something? What else, or what else can we do, what else should we do in short term? And I realize long-term is probably something that is going to be a little bit more out of the finance committee, realizing what, what other options are, but what can we do for this semester, this year, so that it's not every single day?
Well, I know Marker, for instance, they're having the same issues. I mean, they, they don't have enough drivers for their own routes, and their buses are running late, so I don't know how feasible it would be to partner with other districts right now. I think short-term, as Kim suggested, it's working with Westway to adjust the route times, which means that some kids will get to school earlier, and then we just need to make sure that we have people who will supervise them. The long-term, I think we probably, if this is going to be what we're going to experience long-term, then long-term, we're looking at our school start times, and we're adjusting what times our school days start and end, so that it's easier for, whether it's Westway or another company we're contracted with, it's easier for them to provide transportation with a, with a smaller number of buses. So I think the, short-term though, I think we can look at, talk to Westway, find out how much we'd have to tweak the route times, and then we start to provide supervision for those kids.
Is it possible to have a conversation around school start times this year? Is there a point where we like make a call, like, we got to fix this?
I think, you know, now you're, you're talking about not, you know, impacting families, and then depending upon how much you're tweaking, you're talking about possibly a change in working conditions for our various unions. And so that would, you know, take additional sit-down and discussion. So that's a, a longer or, you know, difficult process versus maybe for this year, adjusting what time the routes pick up.
And can I ask this, I don't have kids at either, at either the junior high or the high school, so I don't know this. Do, do the junior high and high school share routes, or is it to, is it because they're across the street from each other? Like, do they pick up, or could they pick up junior high and high school kids on the same route? I don't know if that would help anything, but.
The high school gets off earlier than the junior high.
Right. You would, again, need supervision at one of the buildings, and one of the other things, I mean, typically, parents have not wanted their junior high students riding the bus with high school students, so again, that would be a change that would, you know, need to be considered as well.
Yeah, I get it, and, although it seems like we want, we have parents who would like their kids to be on the bus. And if it's a question between, can my kid get on the bus? Do they have to ride a bus? The high school are, you know, giving, having that, we may have to have, and we are going to have to have, some of those thoughts and conversations amongst, amongst us, amongst the administration, because I think some of those hard questions are going to have to be answered at some point here, coming up. Because this is, it can't, it can't be every day, it just can't be every day, and that's what it is right now.
I think it's, if I'm correct, and Kevin, you can help, I think there's some shared bus routes with junior high, like one starting or ending, and then going to the junior high, because they start differently. But the junior high and high school are also on different times, so. I have a question too about finding a solution, and then looking at the utilization of the buses, like between, you know, the amount of people we see dropping, you know, picking up and dropping their own kids off. How's the utilization of the buses with students? Are there some routes that are kind of empty? And I know this is something else you're saying that you'll look at, like is there, with combining routes, in some ways, where on routes that there are not a large number of children at the elementary school? I don't know, with certain neighborhoods to get, it may not require a large change in time, but.
Yeah, well.
With combining that, that way.
I mean, some of the things that they look at when they're routing is the length of time students are on the bus, and so we try to keep that to a half an hour, but I think we do have some routes that are already like 45 minutes. And so again, depending upon how you schedule things, you could have kids riding longer than, depends. The other thing, on the one day, and we got some complaints, but, you know, we looked at the bus video, because there was, where the bus drivers did have to combine routes, and so they divided and conquered, and so instead of three buses, like we had two, so they picked up what, you know, they split and picked up that third route. And so there were only two children to a seat on the bus in the bus video, but we got complaints that students were sitting in the floor, in the aisles, the bus was really overcrowded. So they could sit three to a seat, so it was, however that happened, there were a couple of students that chose, it looked to us that they chose not to sit three to a seat, and it only would have been a couple of students. So, I mean, those are some of the other things, you know, that we can, we can look at, ridership, and unfortunately, ridership changes as the weather changes. So on some routes, it may be lower right now, but when it starts getting cold and snowy and rainy and things like that, then the ridership changes as well.
Absolutely.
So, you know, but we'll work on investigating, you know, some other times, and having Westway figure out how they could, you know, maybe run routes with fewer, you know, do the double, the double route or whatever, and we can look at supervision and see if we have staff that will man the supervision, and then, you know, what, what that looks like in terms of times for kids to get to school and get out of school.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me like the, the board is basically saying, can we add a future meeting, look at, what can we do for this year? And then, you know, what, when is the long-term? I know we talked about a finance committee meeting, but I'm not sure that's gotten rolling yet either, just to see what the long-term is, and, you know, just make sure we're on top of this. So I'm not sure we can do that at the very next meeting and have all that ready to go.
Probably not.
Probably not.
But we can probably get some feedback from Westway about what possibly some tweaks could be made for this year.
Yeah, but I think we might need a dedicated conversation on.
Sure.
Busing.
Can I throw another crazy idea? But just, I'm thinking about, like, if we do tweak the times, that might impact families who like, you know, there may be, their whole work schedule is set on my kid's getting picked up at this time, and now if it's going to be 20 minutes earlier or 20 minutes later, I don't know, it just could throw things off, and this is not a solution to the busing at all, but it's more of like, in this, in the present circumstances, how can we work together, again, as a community, which we've been doing? I know, I think some schools incentivize carpooling in some way and gather information about like who, who, because there are plenty of parents dropping their children off who might even still be in a bus route area, like maybe they're willing, you know, again, doesn't solve the solution, there's still going to be kids who have to get on that bus or don't participate in carpooling, but if I feel really strongly about getting my kid to school on time, or at a particular time, I might take advantage of that. I just don't, maybe I just don't know who my.
Yeah, incentivizing is certainly, if there's some.
I don't know what it would be, but.
Yeah, what it could be, I mean, that personally, that's actually what I do with my neighbor. I pick up the little kids from Miller, she picks up the older kids from Manning, and, and, you know, we fit. and, you know, we fit as many kids in our cars as we can, but, um, but yeah, kind of bringing that up to the, to the community as a potential, and maybe we can figure something out.
Just an idea.
That is, that's an idea, certainly a short-term idea, potential.
Sure.
Um, so I wanna go back to the crossing guards, just for a second. I just wanna ask one clarifying question, when it comes to um actually hiring crossing guards. So currently, our practice is to work with the village, who then has a contract with, I always forget the name.
Andy Frain.
Thank you. Um, do we also have the option to post our own positions for crossing guards? Or is it, are we, is it really the village's responsibility to provide those through the contract?
Um, I think we could.
We could, um, my preference would be that people, and we, and we've put out a, a note to parents that if they're interested in a position, you know, to, that we would put them in contact with Andy Frain.
Yeah.
You know, and they could say that they want to work, you know, in Westmont, at those locations.
Yeah. I think that was, um, that was a concern of some parents, that they might get deployed in.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Various different communities.
They can say where they want to work.
Okay.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we would not want our parents to work for Andy Frain and work in another community.
Right.
We want them here, so.
Quick question, who, who, who pays Andy Frain? Us, or the village?
Well, right now, so for any, for these two new ones, we would pay them ourselves, and would have a contract with them. In the past, the village had paid a hundred percent of the crossing guard costs, and then in the last couple of years some of now that's being uh shifted to the district, and ultimately, I think it's gonna be um a hundred percent district paid over the course of time, over the next few years. But the, the village has the contract for um the Warwick Crossing, the um one at Norfolk, the um railroad tracks, and then the one at Richmond by Holy Trinity.
So it's just the two on Chicago Naperville? That we would, that we are, or we would be paying for, because that's, I'm not clear on that either.
Well, we're not paying for that right now, because they don't have anybody, but we will be when, when they can get that staffed, we will be paying a hundred percent.
But we're still working through the village to source the.
Well, we, so.
Sorry, I'm just, I wanna make sure.
We started working with the village on it because they had the contract, okay?
Yeah.
Very complicated, um, we don't need the, the nuts and bolts of it. But we're in direct contact with Andy Frain Services to hire for the two locations on Cass. Because they can't fall under the village contract, that's already signed, done, and so we would have our own. And so, as soon as they can get people, then we'll have our own contract with them for those two crossing guards.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
And if, if I remember from the last time we talked about this, this really, in a lot of ways, goes back to the transportation issue. Because we said that we don't know whether IDOT would give us, um, what's the exception?
The hazardous crossings?
Hazardous crossing exception, but we certainly didn't wanna seek it, get it, and then still have a transportation issue, which we already have.
Right.
Right.
If I remember that correctly, that's how, that's how that was, so.
And so, and again, some of this, um, if this, the crossing guard situation didn't exist pre-grade level centers. So, the decision about grade level centers, if that were made then it can help the rest of the dominoes fall into place.
I, I guess what I, what I was about this, I was gonna say was that ultimately, those two intersections are as much a transportation issue as they are a crossing guard issue.
Correct.
Is really what I, so, back to the transportation issue, and that is, like Leah said this probably isn't a temporary thing. And so, I don't know, you know, we had a, a task force on elementary education, involving the community, and it involved administration, it involved a lot of people to, to, to help the, in, in community come up with a solution to what we view as a longer-term problem. Maybe this is another thing that we should think about, because we're not gonna, there's, I don't think that this very smart group of people here, debating this every two weeks, is gonna come up with the set of solutions.
Totally agree.
Maybe, but maybe, a group of people who are separate from this, or, and, and include people that are here in this room today can put together something over the course of the next couple of months, that addresses the long, because it is a long-term transportation issue. I, I, I think it probably is, so, anyway, it's just.
And, and I, I don't disagree with that, Carlos, I, I do feel like it still needs to be driven by you, Kevin, and you, Kim, in terms of you understand the financial implications, you understand how the busing systems work. Like it's, that's your um role, but similar to the elementary task force um recommendations could come to a committee, and then we would know what, what parents are willing to do to help solve this. Am I willing to put my sixth grader on the bus with a senior in high school?
That's what I'm talking about.
You know, like then that would help us sort of put the guardrails in place.
And if, if I could just, I wanna, I wanna make sure that I have all the information about the crossings in for, uh, correct from what we've talked about before, because you guys were staffing those specifically Trabi and Naperville slash Chicago. Um, and what you were looking for out of your staff besides the support there was how many kids are crossing without parents?
Correct.
And remind me, did you see a significant number at Trabi and/or Naperville or Chicago crossing without parents walking them to school?
At Trabi, we saw no children crossing without a parent. And that would be expected, because that would be kindergartners and first graders. So it would be um highly unlikely that a parent would have their child, their kindergartner, or first grader cross Cass Avenue by themselves. Um, and then at um the Chicago Naperville um, every day, there is one parent who walks her child to and from school. And then there typically have been two boys that um either walk or ride their bike on a daily basis. So those were routine people that all of us saw, and then occasionally, a few others, but.
Okay, awesome.
For the majority of the time, that was, that was it.
Okay, so I wanted to make sure that I had, I had the right information there, and then the third crossing that we had talked about previously was Washington, which was crossing, is it Naperville there? I think it's Naperville there.
Yeah.
Um, crossing Naperville, heading up to Miller, and that, that location didn't make sense to put a crossing guard in because you're kind of coming up from a hill, and you wouldn't expect a crossing guard there like we would see further up on Chicago over by Manning. Um, awesome, thank you, so then.
And it's next to a tavern, which is probably also not a good location for students to cross. And so, it, you'll be a few blocks out of a parent's way, out of a, um, someone's way to walk. But to walk to where we have the crossing guards.
Yeah, I bet, so, and, and also, most of those children, or all of those children right now, were first and second graders. If they're being walked or ridden to school, it's typically with a parent or a caregiver. Um, is there, is there, or what is the process, is that something that we even enter? Um, to have potentially a stop sign entered there, to make that a four-way stop, is that something that? And, and I'm, I'm more asking for like, super long-term, right? If, whatever ends up happening, you know, and how our elementary centers are figured out. Does it make sense to make that a stop sign?
So one of the other things that we um should be working on is, um, and I'm becoming very aware of s- uh, traffic signals where there are crossing guards, so I'm paying attention as I drive to work each day. But typically, there would be some additional signage um prior to those intersections. And so, um, even on uh Cass and Chicago, there would probably be uh indicators where nobody can turn right on red during certain, you know, times, if there's pedestrians in the you know, waiting on the corners or things like that, that's some other intersections have that. We would have to work with the village, maybe even on their lighting and the timing of the stoplights and things like that. Um, again, different signage to let them know that this is like a school crossing zone, and things, things like that. That, that we will, should be working on them with, with them on. But again, if we don't have grade level centers, this is a non-issue.
Mm-hmm.
So we can continue to, you know, push forward and try and get things in place, for if and when that decision is made. But, you know, so those are, are some of the things that I, that I have noticed.
We think it's a non-issue.
Guarding going, you know, wow, these, are these people paying attention? You know, when they're gonna turn right, that you have the walk sign, but are they paying attention that somebody's walking, walking across? And then those crossing lights would probably be, um, the pedestrian signals will be a little bit longer. Potentially even have the countdown on them, so that the pedestrian knows how long they have to get across the intersection as well.
So, I mean, we think it might not be an issue, the, you know, grade level centers are not, we might need to adjust our, our districts as well for the, for the grade schools, but um, that is incredibly helpful, and, and my only other piece is to Laura's point about can our parents apply just directly to our website, I would find it hard to believe that there is not some additional um cost that we pay to Andy Frain.
Right.
Through the village in some way, for staffing these locations, making it more expensive, in some way or another, but also and this is from a, from a people manager standpoint, the harder it is to apply, the less likely you're gonna apply. So if I had to click here to click here to go to Andy Frain's website, if we could remove one of those steps and folks could apply directly to us.
Okay.
That, that might potentially just get more people to apply to us, and, and also, thinking through if this becomes something that we have to pay for, and we have to figure out in the next, you know, five-year process. Maybe just getting that process into place, knowing that we're gonna have to staff our own crossing guards there, I just wonder about that piece.
And so, I'll have, I'll have the counterpoint to that. Okay, we're already staffing subs, and ha- trying to have a pool of substitutes for our teachers and TAs who are out. Now we hire our own, our own crossing guards, now we need a sub pool for crossing guards as well.
Why would we need a sub pool for crossing guards in addition? Is that required by a contract?
Two crossing guards for the two intersections, somebody's sick and can't make it, who's gonna be the crossing guard that day?
Same person that's doing it now.
Andy Frain Services, typically, again, in a normal environment has a pool of subs that they send to their contracted locations.
But at this point, do they? Because will they still fall in the same?
This is not a normal environment, and it is not going to be a normal environment for the remainder of this year guaranteed, and potentially for longer. So if we can get somebody staffed there, and even if they are sick one day a week, or whatever that may be if we can get it, because it's easier to apply, would we not?
It depends if we wanna be in the crossing guard business.
Well, it sounds like we're gonna have to be in the crossing guard business. I, that's, that's, that's the, that's what I, it sounds like to me, and I don't, I don't know how hard it is, but I do know that people won't go the extra step to apply for jobs if they have to, if they have to go that step further. I do know, and it's guaranteed and proven that, that not all people will take that extra step, and that if, if we're certainly cutting off a section of people, it might only be two. But it, but that's two more that, that might have applied, just making sure that we are doing all the things that we can do within our power.
Yeah, and I think what I, I mean, Kim, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but I think what I hear, hear you saying is, we can do that. It might come at the expense of staffing some of these other positions, or the time spent searching for and approving
Right.
Some of these other positions, so I think, I think this is a larger conversation about um our access to resources, and what resources we have to, to even get, you know, things lined up for short term and long term, so, I mean, I don't really know how we package that conversation, because I feel like it's definitely a conversation on transportation, which is busing and crossing guards. But it's also a larger, like, what are we gonna do about this staffing situation, short term and long term as well?
Right.
Um, and, and how can we support the district in
Yeah.
Um, making, you know, the decisions that need to be made, and prioritizing what needs to be prioritized. Um, so, I mean, I don't know if that can be something we put on a future agenda as well.
Yeah, we can.
Like, soon, because, like, maybe next, not next time, but the time after that, um, so that we can start. I, I, because I agree, we're gonna keep having this conversation over and over again, if we don't have a dedicated com- a conversation about it, and I also agree that this uh labor market is not gonna change anytime soon. And so if we're feeling pinched on one side, it's gonna have a ripple effect on all of the decisions we make. And that's what I think is, is happening here.
Well, and, I mean, unfortunately, we're, we're pinched everywhere.
Right.
So, our custodian, we're just very short-staffed, our custodians, so they are working, you know, they're.
Yes, but that doesn't mean that we do nothing, that doesn't mean that we wait for somebody else to, to not be pinched. We can't just be pinched everywhere and say, we're pinched everywhere, that can't be our end. And, and when it comes down to transportation, and uh the crossing guards in particular, that is, that is safety of our kids, and in a very different, in a, in a different way, right? In a building, I don't have enough subs, there are lots of adults in that building. This is kids, and I realize it's not a lot, but this is the safety of the kids on the streets as they're trying to get to school in a safe manner. I just, we just can't continue to say it's hard everywhere, and it might get better. That's, that's my, that's my.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that's what I've heard.
No.
People saying, I think, um, we're saying we're gonna have a conversation about it that gives Kevin and Kim some time to put together the information they need to put together. Um, I also think we need to acknowledge that Kim and her staff
Mm-hmm.
Took time away from doing this planning work to actually fill the roles of crossing guards for the first several weeks, which was um, you know, above and beyond, um, so, I hear what you're saying, and I understand the push, and I think it's necessary, but I also think uh, I don't feel like the, the district is saying, we're doing nothing, I think we're saying, we need to keep on this. But we're not gonna make a decision tonight in this room, because we don't have the right information.
But Laura, I have a question about that, you were saying not being prepared, and you, for you, Kevin, not where it's gonna be too hard, or um probably not feasible to have um a plan by the next meeting. But in between that, um, as a committee, I don't know if that's helpful, like you were throwing out the idea of that finance committee but I don't know if there's another committee meeting, or something where we can kind of hash out things, or ideas in between our meetings for the, uh, for the board, I don't know if there's any help that you could, or suggestion you would have. That, so we know from this point, as planning, like, this is something we, we wanna tackle, we wanna talk about more in discussion. And this is where we're gonna do it, and then after that, um, we plan to have some ideas, or at least, I don't know more data points at the following meeting, so I don't know if that's in any suggestions, so we can move on from this to say, where are we going from here, and, and how we're gonna tackle it. I don't know, a committee, uh, a committee group would be best, and I guess get your direction.
Yeah, I, and, you know, in, in terms of the current committee structure we have, the finance committee probably would be the, the group that initially would start having the conversation. Because a, a lot of these things are obviously driven by, by finances, so you could.
And it's something they can talk about with crossing guards, busing, I guess, way to tackle, we're not gonna, again, probably find the answer in two weeks, but I guess, come up with a, a game plan of how to attack this, and going forward for the future, for the rest of the year.
Right.
Um, we can start to institute something and.
Yeah, and I, I love the idea of having a, a committee meeting get started. Um, I would just add my first thought, which is, I think we need a situation assessment. Not, it doesn't have to be super deep, but we're, we all have different experiences with how dramatic this problem is. Not, it doesn't have to be super deep, but we're, we all have different experiences with how dramatic this problem is for the district. Um, and I think we need, like, unemotional, un, you know, just really the facts of what has been the situation for us in terms of busing. How many times have the bus has been late? How many times have the bus has not been on time? How many times have they been overcrowded or missed stops or whatever? Like, what is the situation
Right.
in factually? Um, and, uh, the same with the crossing guards. We filled those positions ourselves for two weeks. Kim gave a little bit of the lay of the land, but how much was, were they utilized? How, how efficient is that really? I mean, I understand it's a safety issue, but if no one's crossing at those places, there are other places kids can cross to get to school that do have crossing guards. So, how do we break this down and really look at what the situation is and what's really necessary? Because we're gonna have to make those kinda tough calls across the board with the current staffing situation. Um, so maybe that's something the committee can start with, is just really laying out what is the situation.
Right.
I agree. I think just putting pen to paper, the data, the numbers, we have to start, start there.
Stripping the problem.
Yeah, for sure. Just to visualize it a little bit more effectively and then I think that will make the problem solving, um, a little bit. It won't be easy, but it'll make it more accessible.
Yep.
And, and in the meantime, we have, um, what we have now, um, looking at staff, two extra, uh, spots, uh, areas for crossing guards. That's still, that's out there now, uh, requesting, um, is, is it with the village they are requesting it right now? That's there.
We requested it directly.
Right, so that's still there.
Mm-hmm.
Already in place.
Yep.
Not, not the solution yet, but, um, I'm just trying to list, what have we done? What are we waiting for? We are trying, you know, the attempts are there. Um, you're working with Westway, um, and they're looking at their routes and trying to come up with, uh, solutions. So leaving here, we have some things that are happening. We know that it's not the solution yet, but there are some things that have worked. And then we will set out to look at actual data and, and problem solve with that also.
For, for the crossing guards, I, I'm just spitballing, but could they be maybe staffed by maybe high school students that wanna earn service hours?
Oh.
Or is it too dangerous?
I, well, typically, uh, yeah, I mean, you know, you have, um, back in my day, there were patrol boys. And, uh, but typically you didn't do like a, a CAS and, you know, Naperville type of a street. And then the other thing that you'll run into is the high school, they start their school day and the student's out on the corner doing the crossing. And so they're, you know,
Right.
missing students from school on time. So. Now, I think it's a good idea, looking at the scope of the problem, right? I mean, we're, um, you know, definitely, it's, it's safety, you know, that we need to be concerned about. But if it's underutilized, you know, is, is that the best utili- utilization of our efforts? Or is it more tackling the transportation, the busing and, and those issues? So, but I think looking at the scope of the problem is where it starts.
Can we do that between now and next meeting? Is that reasonable to break it down to the scope of the problem with a, with a subcommittee or is that too aggressive?
I always say it's doable.
It depends how many hours, um, that I wanna work a week.
It feels a little aggressive to have it before the next meeting.
You know, we just approved a west, a contract, we're still working on
Okay, so October.
Some things like that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, you, you said the word subcommittee, the subcommittee a couple of times. What, what subcommittee are you referring to?
I don't, I was probably just
Yet to be named.
Just yet to be named, right? Like, if we decided to form a committee.
The subcommittee at two?
No, 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 there'd be other people. But some of the data, like
I was spitballing off of your idea, um, assuming that that would happen.
You know, for instance, the, you know, um, the buses and, and how many students are riding the buses? Well, either, that's either information Westway has to give us or, um, you have, uh, somebody at each of the buildings, you know, who is counting hats, right? And you find out how many kids are actually riding buses. And then, um, typically our, our secretaries are already charting late buses, right? Because, you know, they, they know if a bus is running late. And so, you know, some of that is just, you know, we might have some of that information, it's just
Piling it together.
Pulling it together, you know? Um, the crossing guard, we have, you know, a couple of weeks of data, you know, in terms of, uh, how frequently they're used. Um, so it depends on, on how much information we need and how deep we wanna go, but, um, we can start collecting some of that.
Great, yeah, and I think, I mean, I think it's best to ta- not take our time, that like, you know, but, but let's get a full picture. So if it's not the next, next meeting or two or, or three, and I think, you know, just to echo, and I know that people have said this already, like, I think from the outside perspective, especially as a frustrated parent who's like, again, you know, seriously, I need my kid to get to school on time. It's like, what is going on? But what, the very first thing I heard from Kim is that we're brainstorming. We're, we're, we are trying every single day to figure out a solution to these problems. And it's very complicated beyond the scope of just there is a labor shortage, there's all kinds of other complications. And so, um, I, I heard Kim ask for patience and I think that is a plea for patience and, you know, we're working on it. So I, I think we're all eager to look at this again and look forward to that, yeah.
Yeah. And, and you know, and not, uh, you know, be gloom and doom, but another layer of this problem's being added next week. Because, you know, when you, bus drivers also are required to be vaccinated or, or have a negative test. And we don't know yet, but there may be some people who opt, you know what? I'm not gonna vaccinate, I'm not gonna get tested, I'm just not gonna drive a bus.
Yeah.
And so, um, you know, all those things, you know, keep adding to this. And as Adina pointed out, it's, and Jess, you alluded to this, but it's not like we're just sitting pat, you know? Um, we are working with Westway. We are seeing if we can tweak the pickup times on the routes and, again, it's not perfect. But there are some things that we're working on so that, you know, we're aware that's an issue and, and we're, we're trying to come up with solutions for it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think, um, that's the right approach and we just need a solid, like, contingency plan, knowing that we're gonna need the contingency plan. And it sounds like you guys are working on it, so, um, anything else?
Quick, you know, um, and Leah kinda triggered this thought in my head about how people don't wanna click and the click, no. You're right, people don't click and click and they don't wanna look. Is there any way, um, you, you have the reminder slide of what, who has COVID symptoms, what the symptoms look like, what you can do, what quarantine is? Is there a place we could have a tab on the district page where it states all this? That you need the PCR test to come back, you need that. I think just having that, because I've seen conversations over the last few weeks, wait, I don't know who to send this to and I don't know who to talk to. And it, you won't know until you have a situation where you are speaking with the nurse.
Oh, yeah, we can put that together.
Awesome.
And I just, I wanna go back with your presentation with the, with testing. Because I, I think, I, I have even some confusion with what, um, um, I'm thinking of another name. But they're asking the test of stay. Because I think, you know, we've, it's stated in your, uh, presentation about, um, non-vaccinated versus vaccinated and who needs to test and who needs to quarantine and when. So I'm not quite sure, like, adding or, um, shield asking to do four tests in a week's time when the CDC says for, uh, even a vaccinated person, you test between three and five days. It's one test. Um, I don't know what other companies are out there, uh, well, I guess it's ISBE and what they'll pay for it too. Because I, I would imagine it's, it's less cost for ISBE to say, hey, we'll test a student or a staff member once at this time and date. And then, anyway, we have, you know, these other tests to do. I think it gets complicated, like you said, if they're requiring us to do this test of stay with these number of tests. I don't even think they ask physicians to do that many tests, um, to your time. So, um, I don't know if the ISBE is using other companies or, um, whether their option, if there's another option. I know schools are testing. They have, um, there are some that are doing, um, just the maintenance testing and then some that are doing, um, as needed.
Right.
And it keeps it less complicated for your nurse in the schools. So I don't know if there are other measures to do that, because I do think it's helpful to have testing at school and get kids returned faster. But, um, I do think having that number, that test of stay and the number of tests would make it too complicated.
Right, and, and again, you know, the issue, the other, I think the underlying issue with test of stay is that it's the CDC, the IDPH, you know, they're not on board with it, so, you know.
I'm not sure about air pressing that many, that many tests. It's from an educational standpoint, for me, that would be great to study it, but I don't think in schools that's necessarily.
Right.
Any other questions for Kevin or Kim? Okay, um, the last item for discussion and information is the emergency days. Continuing our conversation from
Right. So, um, at the last board meeting, um, again, uh, and I have the two memos there. One is the memo from the first meeting and then some of the additional information the board was looking for. And, uh, and again, um, and this was the option before, um, we had remote learning. And, uh, that was, uh, e-learning days. And so traditionally, you have cold weather where it's not safe for students to be on the bus stop or, uh, snow where, again, it's not safe to transport students. And so schools would cancel school, make up the day at the end of the year. And then a few years ago, they started to pilot in a few districts, e-learning days where the students could basically be given work to do at home, um, essentially five hours of work. And then the school wouldn't have to make up the day. And those became e-learning days. There is a process, um, that a district has to go through to get those approved. Um, and doing some further research, um, even if you have an e-learning plan, doesn't necessar- you don't have to necessarily take e-learning days, you can still take traditional snow days. You can also mix them up, you know? You can say, okay, you know, our district, our guidelines are, we'll take, you know, a maximum of three e-learning days. But then if we need additional days, those will be snow days so that we make up those two days or, or any combination. Uh, you can do it either way. Um, I know, uh, Jess, you had a question about, you know, is it success, successive days? And same thing there, you know, as guideline, if we're out three days, you know, there's a blizzard that hits or something, we're out three days. That, um, you know, one can be an e-learning day, but the other days need to be made up. Or two e-learning days, you know, um, the other day needs to be made up. Because, uh, the difference between e-learning and remote, um, there is no interaction with the teacher like you have with the remote. E-learning is all asynchronous. Um, the, uh, teachers post the work by a certain time of the day, who's, you know, like nine o'clock. And then students have the remainder of that day to complete the work and submit it, um, to the teacher. And then you have caveats for a student if they don't have, um, Wi-Fi at home or there's a problem with their Wi-Fi. They're allowed additional days to make up the work, um, so you do have different caveats to cover those incidences. So again, I don't know if this is something the board wants to pursue or if you just wanna stick with the traditional emergency days. And if we need to take any, then they're just added to the, to the calendar.
Is there any, like, has the administration or WTA expressed any opinion one way or the other?
Uh, the WTA's in favor of the e-learning. The administrators are in favor of the e-learning, so.
Like, like full e-learning or some sort of combination of?
Um, they're, they're in favor of just full e-learning.
E-learning.
You know?
And by e-learning, what we mean, i- i- we, we're differentiating from, from, from remote learning, is that correct? E-learning, remote learning, two different things. An e-learning, it, the days count the same as the emergency days, you just don't add on to the end of the year.
Right.
So it's five total.
Right, and there's no, like, now could, um, our teachers zoom with students? They could, but it's not a requirement of e-learning. You know, the zooming isn't a requirement of it.
And I remember from our last conversation on this, that we rarely, if ever, used all five emergency days in the past.
Right.
Meaning that if the past is prologue, then, then we would probably rarely go through all five e-learning days.
Right.
And we would finish on the twenty, whatever of May.
Right.
Can I ask what, what the rationale is for why they wanna move to e-learning days instead of at the end of the year?
I think it's because it's, you know, like everybody else, like our families, it's easier to plan, you know, for vacations and those types of things. Uh, when you know that you don't have to worry about additional days at the end of the year, you're, you're kinda locked into that end day.
But if you know, I mean, if you know that potentially, what, the calendar is, um, if we used all five, which we rarely do, um, when would we, we would end on a
Put it out, five, five school days.
Yeah, so
I thought we had them or, I thought we already had them built into the end of the year.
Yeah, so it would be, the last emergency day is June ninth, so if I, I'm a fan, I'm not gonna plan a vacation before June ninth then.
That, um, yes, and for employees, you know, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, that's how they plan.
Yeah.
Our families, not necessarily. And so, um, it's not unusual for a family to decide to plan a trip right at the end of the school year. And they, they know they're rolling the dice and then their children would miss those last few days of the school year.
Yeah, potentially like one or two days.
Right, right, depends on
Um, can I ask why on the calendar, there's two days in between the last day of school on the thirty-first and the start of emergency days on the third?
Um, it
What happens on the first and the second?
It could be, let me see, it could be just an error. See if I can pull it up here. My iPad qualifies.
So while Kevin's trying to pull that up, do you, does anybody else have an opinion on, you know?
I'd like that, or I guess I would stress with the e-learning that, um, the openness of, um, the caveats, if a, a family doesn't have Wi-Fi or especially for the younger kids, that there's not this hard deadline, that this has to be turned in, you know, by five PM or they have all day, so they have a chance to maybe look at things with parents or, um, they have so many days to turn something in. And then I'm, and I think the harder part is looking at younger children, um, for e-learning. Like what, what are we asking them to do and, um, with parents who may still be at work? So, um, I guess, you know, not getting on the dance floor, but just stressing that when they look at e-learning for the younger children, that is, is something that's, um, I guess, easy to, to look at, to bring up on Wi-Fi, to, you know, um, the timing they have to even complete it and it still applies. And they get the, the work or time they need to complete the work.
Yeah.
I think that's such an important, uh, point, Adina, and I might still just be traumatized from all of the e-learning of last year. We probably all are. Um, and I, I just, it's not, it's not, the students learn best, they are engaged when they're with their teachers. I just, if our only rationale for doing this is so families can more accurately plan their vacations, it's not a compelling argument for me. I don't see, just because we can make a change to e-learning days, I'm not hearing why we should. Um, I don't think it's a beneficial learning experience for students, especially when there's so much variability in the types of assignments that are posted to Google Classroom. And you're thinking about what families have to experience on those days when it's weather-related and everybody's at home. And it's just, it's a tricky situation. The best situation is always for our students to be in the school building. So I think, you know, it makes sense to me, just if it's only one or two, take your two snow days and make them up. And, and have the kids be in school for their learning experiences.
That was, that was my, that was my point, like, they are, I'm sorry, they are, um, the best, best thing is for learning, but they're not in school. So I don't know, I look at it a different, a different way than that. So I don't know, I look at it a different, a different way than that. Then, and I've seen examples pre-COVID. And just hearing of students who had e-learning and you kind of ask and you talk to their parents and like, oh, we all live in Chicago. You, you know, we have our emergency day, so we're still in school past this day. Why aren't you using those? Because I know you weren't in school. Because we just had a blizzard. And I'm like, no, we got things sent home. We have time to complete it because we completed this work. You know, we don't have those days. And it's still learning. It's not the optimal one, but they're not learning anyway because they're out of school. So I, I think it's an opportunity.
But if you have the opportunity for optimal learning in school, I can't understand why we wouldn't do that. And just, it's just changing the calendar a little bit. It's not like, you know, I, I just, again, and I, I know that schools do this and it's a new thing. But as a teacher and an administrator who also sees and experiences what the quality of asynchronous especially, like if it were a remote learning day, I might feel differently about it. Honestly, if there were that two and a half hours of live instruction with a teacher, then I feel different about it. If the first grader is, you know, actually sitting there, talking to their teacher, practicing their reading with their teacher versus just completing, I'm not going to say it's busy work. I saw the distinction on here between like homework assignment versus an assignment that's posted for asynchronous. But I've seen, I've created a more asynchronous assignments than I would ever like to see in my entire life. They're just not the same. And I, I'm just, I just want us to think about that, you know, I just want us to think about that before we just say like, hey, we have this really convenient, these e-learning days, let's just do that. I, I still am not hearing a compelling argument for why to do it. But Andrew, what were you going to say?
Well, it was, my, my fear would be parents, oh, we had snow days, my internet wasn't working. That excuse is going to come out of a lot of people just for giggles. And then if it is really a cold day, our internet can be affected. Like on those cold days, the internet can be affected and you've got the whole district or half the district out because this side doesn't have the greatest connections to begin with. And now it's, you know, thirty, forty below. So it just, it's going to have a lot of trouble coming up. I mean.
And is it worth it? Is it worth it?
Yeah, so, so like what I, what I keep hearing is, is adding another layer, adding another layer of complexity to what is already a very complex system. And for a day or two, I, for me, I don't know that it's the thing that we need to figure out this year. I see the piece of figuring it out, right? Create a plan. Um, get it approved, go through this process so that we have it because we don't have to use it. But then I say, does that need to be done this year when we have a lot of other things that are much more pressing? I don't necessarily think that it is a, a need for this year. And I think last year is still very present in a lot of people's minds. I do have a lot of concerns on the asynchronous piece for the, for the younger learners. Because it, it, in an all high school district, give them something to do on, on a, on a snow day. But we are not. And a, a kindergartner or a second grader, even a third grader doing something asynchronously is very different than a fifth grader or a sixth grader, which adds even another layer of complexity. And then from the, from the teacher's standpoint, what I see is, is them having to scramble to create a plan quickly. Something asynchronous for tomorrow, which feels like just pressure where we don't necessarily need to add more pressure. That's, that's what it, it feels like a layer of complexity in a lot of different places that we just don't need to tackle. This year, maybe, maybe next year. But that's, that's where I sit with it.
And I hear what you guys are saying, my other is looking on the other side of it. Only place to learn isn't just at school. There is learning outside of school. And teachers are saying, we ask, what do they feel about it? And I think it is, I, I see both sides of it, like we don't want to add more complexity. That's why I think it was a great question to ask, what do the teachers think about? I want to add more on their plate. And I don't, I'm not the one that's coming up with the e-plan. These, this is coming from teachers. I've seen wonderful things that they did. Oh, we've learned what we could do and ways to learn that wasn't busy work that I was amazed by, that they had kids doing different things on CSOW, just talk, you know, talk about what it's like to go on vacation. And that was work. And they did wonderful things. So I, I take that and what they did and what we learned from this past couple of years, asynchronous. We, and yes, not making busy work, not making extra work, but I, I see it as an option. How can we make that? And that, the answer may be not this year, but I think it is something, you know, that is viable option that we could take place. I just, I just want to add that part, that learning is not just at school. And you have that opportunity there.
Yeah, I, can I, I just, I want to throw my opinion in there. I mean, I guess I'm, this might come out the wrong way, but I think, you know, we're talking about a couple of days of school. One which will sort of be like a snow day where they'll have some asynchronous learning. The other option is a day tacked on to the end of the year where they're pretty much checked out already. And so I, I don't, I just want to inject a little reality into the situation that I don't think the missed learning is going to be, certainly I agree one hundred percent that in-person is better if we can. But I don't think the missed learning is going to be as, you know, maybe as severe as what, you know, what we're thinking. That's just my opinion. I, I also think, you know, our teachers and administrators are telling us this is something they feel like is a good idea for us. And I don't know that we, you know, I, I don't, I don't feel as though, I hear you saying you don't have a compelling rationale for it. I also don't have a compelling rationale to overrule their recommendation either.
For sure. But I think, could, could we just hear a little bit more about why other than the vacation?
That I, that I, that I agree with.
Yeah. Because also, a- a- again, it does kind of mess up things for people at home on those days. It's not ju- it is, I mean, learning is number one. And I think also the quality of what we've seen in asynchronous learning during the pandemic is proba- probably different than even me as a teacher, like, you know, on a random snow day when I'm scrambling at five in the morning versus, I have no choice, I have to do this because they literally cannot be in school. Versus just like, you know, but you're right. And I thought about that, like June third versus the snow day, like on either day is not going to be exactly what we want it to be, for sure. But I guess I'm, I'm just not there yet. You know, I think this, it's a great opportunity and we're so lucky that we have this opportunity. But what Ann said about wifi and text, I, I just, I feel like it's, there are so many layers. I'm just not sure we're there yet to com- commit to that.
I don't, I mean, we have a little time on this, right? I mean, I'm still praying that it doesn't snow next week. And maybe not even for a few more weeks afterwards. So maybe we have a little bit more time on this to hear, and I think Jess, you made a good point. I'd like to hear a little bit more of the rationale. So maybe we bring this back up?
I mean, that's fine with me if we can get like some of the teachers' rationale that goes beyond the calendar, basically.
Well, and I, I can share with you, well, a couple of things. One is, this is the second time the board has discussed this. So it was a different board. When e-learning first was approved by the state board about it, it was, we brought it to the board and at that time they didn't want to do it. And the, the other rationale is also we're trying to get our students ready for the different state assessments and for AP. And every time, and those, those states don't change. You know, if you use five snow days, the state of Illinois doesn't say, oh, you can delay the start of your state assessments five days. You still have to give the assessment on those dates. And the same thing with AP. AP doesn't say you can delay, you know. When we initially had a discussion at the school level about e-learning and whether or not this was something that we wanted to consider, some of the questions the board had, I had as well because you're right, in a, in a pre-K through twelve district, it's very easy to envision what happens with older students because they are more independent learners than the younger students. But, you know, the kindergarten students or teachers, the first grade teachers, they felt confident that they could design learning activities that students could, that were meaningful and kids could do at home in the event that it was an e-learning day. And so they believe that they can, can do those things, you know. I can go back and get additional rationale, you know, why teachers would like for this to be considered, you know. It's, it's something that we don't have to do, you know. The only deadline we have, if you, if you're a believer in the farmer's almanac, the farmer's almanac says that we're going to have a significant snow event about the second week of January. Another significant winter storm in the middle of February. And they're even saying the middle of March. So.
So like a normal year. So like a January, February and March.
We don't have to worry about until after the first of the year.
I feel like I could get behind, I was really grateful for the information about combining the days. And I think I could get behind this a little bit more if it's like, there's an e-learning day. But then if we're off another day, it's either a snow day or a remote day. Because, I mean, if we're talking test prep stuff, then I don't want it to just be like you randomly click your quick practice AP questions or ACT questions or whatever they are. And then you're done and then you're out playing, you know. And just, like, I want to make sure that it is truly engaging. So I'm, like, I could get behind one for sure, asynchronous. So is that something we could talk more about? Like what combinations would we be more open to? Because that was really helpful information.
Sure. And I can talk to, like, our different groups about, you know, the, the law that came into effect was prior to this whole idea of remote learning. Remote learning came out of COVID. So prior to that, e-learning was what everybody was, was talking about. And that was before we were a one-to-one district. We're not quite there.
A what district, I'm sorry?
One-to-one. Like last year, all of our students had a device, you know, that they had at home.
One-to-one meaning one device per student.
Right. We're not quite there this year, partly because some devices, you know, they have a usable life. And right now, like everything else, getting Chromebooks.
Supply, yeah.
They're at a premium, the orders are in and you're waiting for them. So we can, I can have some additional conversations at the building level and bring that information back to.
Well, yeah, because the devices is another important thing if we're going to do asynchronous e-learning days, no matter how many, whether it's one or five. Connectivity devices. So the other, I just want to, before we make a rash decision about it. And then exploring the combinations of days, I think, would be really helpful too, just so it's not, you know, without, now, so we, I thought we were only using one or two snow days, but that farmer's almanac does not sound promising. So, you know, maybe we do have to have the conversation about if there are five, you know.
I don't, I don't remember if I asked this last time. I think I might have, and I don't remember the answer. Is it possible to have a different, a different plan for each school? Like, could the high school have a, the high school and the junior high be asynchronous? But the preschool and the grade schools are snow day? Is that?
Probably not because we have a union.
Because it was one or all and that, yeah, okay.
So I, I don't think the union would sign off on something like that.
So then the, the other piece that from, from the, the youngest standpoint, right, could we create content? Yes. Could we create content that our kids can do at home on their own? Without their parents supporting them? And could we create content that our parents would, would be able to support them on at a, at a moment's notice? I have no doubt that we could create that comment, that, that content at those younger grades. Is it content that, how, how confident are we are that, you know, seventy-five percent of our parents are going to be able to follow through with? Fifty percent of our parents, twenty-five percent of our parents, or a hundred percent of our parents in that situation? Because I think at the, especially at the younger grades, again, in K through twelve district situation, at those younger grades, we are not talking about what the kids can do at home. We are talking about what the parents are willing to do and able to do with their time on those days as well. Because those kids do need, do need support in, in some way or another. That doesn't mean where principals are driving iPads all around in the snowstorms and that stuff, so. But I would like to understand more from
Sure.
the staff as well, that's not just a, a calendar situation.
Yeah, and I think the idea, Jess, of maybe, maybe taking a day or two and testing into it this year, I think that would give us a lot of information about how well did this work? How many students were able to log on on the e-learning day? How, you know, how many completed assignments were there? Were parents complaining and upset? Or were they, you know, sort of happy to have something that their kids could do on the day that, you know, where they're trapped inside? It, it just would be interesting to maybe take a day. That's a good thought. So I think we're pushing this peanut down the road a little bit further, Kevin, but with a little more information.
More information.
Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the action items. The first one is the approval of the substitute daily pay rate increase. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the daily substitute rate of one-ten per day and long-term substitute rate of $200 per day as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Donio?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Number two, approval of WesPA collective bargaining agreement. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Westmont Education Support Personnel Association and the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 for the period beginning July 2020 and ending June 30th, 2024 as presented.
So moved.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, your superintendent's report.
So I'm concluding my report. Typically this time of year, I provide the board with an update on enrollments and after our sixth day of attendance. And we're up in enrollment in all of our schools. We, we're thinking the kindergarten numbers, and you're, you're comparing obviously two different class, two different groups of students. But last year, we had ninety students at the end of the year, which is pretty typical for us. This year, we have a hundred and three, so that's a little bit high. We're thinking in some cases, it was a gap year for some parents. They weren't sure what school is going to be like. And rather than enrolling their child, they waited one more year. And so we, we have a little, a few more students as a result of that. So we're up by K through five, we're up by fourteen students. Our junior high, we're up about nine students. And then our high school is up about nine students. So in all of our buildings, our enrollment is up a little bit. So that's nice to see.
Does that cause any issues with like social distancing or space? Or it's not that significant?
Nope, nope.
Any ideas about the
First to second?
First to second? Yeah, that's a.
That's what I was going to ask to you. Down fourteen?
Yeah, that one, not sure, you know, we can, I can ask the principals. That could be possibly the, the fact that we kept the K two, K one model, the two-five, so that could be possible, possibly for some of it.
Looks like they all went to kindergarten.
But yeah, that one's down a little bit, for sure. And then the only other thing that I have in my report is, this is our high school's homecoming week. It's always an exciting week. And Thursday night, the board is aware of is the parade. And, you know, a lot of times the board, myself, we've walked in the parade. And this year, unfortunately, Thursday night, we have a special board meeting with a representative from the School Board Association. We scheduled that back in the spring. And it's our self-evaluation. And so we're not going to be able to participate. But definitely we'll miss the event. And Friday night is our homecoming game. And hopefully we'll have a win for, it's our second home football game. So hopefully we'll do well. And that's my report.
Thanks, Kevin. So future meetings and events, oh, wait a second, board reports, sorry. Does anybody have any board reports?
I just wanted to say thank you to coaches, Maness-
Uh, I just wanted to say thank you to coaches, Manestas, Coach Liz and Coach Sam. Uh, the biddy cheer was fantastic, all the girls did a great job on Friday night, they had a lot of fun, so it was great seeing that.
That was fun.
Um, I just want to give kudos to Laura for coming out to uh, uh, junior high PTO, she gave an overview of what we're working on and I thought it was excellent.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Kevin was there also, that's how he knew I was there, um, but yeah, we've sort of, we've had a practice in the past too of just attending PTO meetings on and off, so I think it's a good idea whenever we can. To pop in, whether it's your school or not, um, the junior high also had a great curriculum night, um, this past week was that, just or last week?
Last week, yeah.
Last week.
Um, and then I just want to echo what Kevin was saying, um, we just want to wish the community um, a a great homecoming. Um, uh, hopefully a win in the, at the football game and a very safe um, dance on Saturday.
Yeah, make good choices.
Make good choices, exactly. Anybody else have board reports? Awesome, okay, so future meetings and events, um, we do have the special board meeting on Thursday, September sixteenth at uh, six P M at South School. The homecoming parade is Thursday, September sixteenth at six thirty P M. The homecoming game is September seventeenth, that's Friday at seven P M. Uh, the Westmont High School Homecoming Dance is this Saturday and um, September eighteenth at the high school. Manning and Miller have their curriculum night on the twenty-first from six to eight P M. And then our next school board meeting is September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one at six P M, that's our regular meeting here at Village Hall. Uh, and then there's also Westmont High School College Information and Financial Aid Night, which is virtual on September twenty-ninth from six thirty to eight P M.
Um, for the special board meeting, our self-evaluation on Thursday, are we going to do that like we did last time where a portion of it is an open and a portion is enclosed? Or will it be entirely closed, is the public welcome, what?
Um, well, every board meeting regardless has public comment, so there will be public, an opportunity for public comment, but this meeting will be completely in closed session.
Okay, so we'll open it up, have public comment.
And then adjourn to close.
Immediately at the beginning, if there is any, and then go directly into closed.
Directly to closed, yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
Any other comments or questions? Otherwise, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I need a motion, actually, I was asking for motion, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, okay, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.